Call the meeting to order at 4:07.
Just a minute or two. 4:07.
And is Kathy with us?
Not yet.
Not yet?
When she joins us, she'll be able to see her on the big screen.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So...
Regarding any additions, Kathy asked that I provide an update on the panels being attached to the side of the building. And...
Okay.
It's pretty much it, and she had a suggestion for correcting events as well.
Okay. All right, so, so update.
Do a little update on the panels. Nobody talks to Kathy about that, so I can provide that once we get into that, once we do minutes.
They aren't up yet?
Hmm?
I guess I haven't looked to see if they're up yet. I can't remember time I go by.
Probably in all of them already.
I've seen the one on the Oak Street House, but I haven't, I haven't gone and looked at the west side, so they're attached. Past tense.
Okay, the change that Kathy had requested. The bottom paragraph under item number four, hiring of a project manager. We discussed who will pay the fees of a project manager, the foundation or funds from the Library General Fund. Myra says the foundation should cover the cost, but noted that there is a hard limit as to what the foundation can't spend. There's also noted that when we, that when we hired a PM for the Brooklyn project recently, the contract was first to fix amount, and it was all money well spent. I think the part that Kathy wanted to change was who should pay the fees of a project manager.
Okay.
And that she wanted to change that to that the foundation would discuss.
Okay. The foundation would discuss, okay?
Yes.
And that would be will in future tense, right?
Yes. That's not happening, but will.
Okay, so, so should I leave everything else the same? Myra says the foundation should cover the cost, but no.
I'm good, and Kathy didn't mention anything of this.
Yeah, I'm good as well.
All right. Okay. All right, so with that change. Are you in agreement, Bonnie?
Yes, I am.
So, as am I, so...
Now, who... Just projects whatever I got off the screen here.
If there's just two of us, there's really not much point in...
Might be more helpful to turn it around, so we can see Kathy.
Well, when she joins us, she'll be up there.
Okay.
So you'll be able to see her up there, and then she'll be able to see Kathy.
We'll be half the size, I think, or something like that. It'll reduce.
Well, I can put her on focus, so that we'll have a huge Kathy for us. Okay. All right then, so I'll provide a quick update here before we get into regular business on the panels on the side of the building.
Are these fabric? I think it's fabric, the fabric panels that promote certain events, the history museum, or?
Oh, they are akin to those, though they're from the 125, Class B Centennial Committee.
Yep.
Back in March, which, shockingly, was only four months ago.
Yeah.
We were approached by the 125 Committee and asked if they could put up a couple temporary murals on the side of the building. They're basically just a few cutouts of old timey lake lovers and swimsuits and other summer regalia. Very nice, very nicely done. If you go out and take a look, they're up there now. I had sent out an email to the Building and Grounds Committee, Janie, which you probably recall.
Yes.
Bonnie, which I can send with you since that's, since you have joined the Building and Grounds Committee since then. And there was a brief discussion as to whether it was necessary to meet. It was considered that it was straightforward enough that we had not, that it was just a temporary pop-up display that they were gonna do, which they have now done. I had was thinking earlier in the week when they contacted me that they were gonna put those up, that I really ought to send out a heads-up to the board, as I usually try to do whenever there's anything happening on library property, to keep trustees informed, but in the midst of a busy week, it escaped me, so...
I don't think anybody's going to complain about it, honestly.
Well, hopefully not, hopefully not. It's fine. They're, they're, they're good, and, you know, they, they took the time to do things the right way, and approached us, and made their request. I asked, had asked as well a bunch of questions as far as how they were gonna anchor them, and, you know, what guarantees they could provide as far as the very remote chance that they actually damaged the wall somehow.
Or damaged a person if they came down or something.
Right. You know, what the guarantees on that would be, and they weren't happy to provide those as far as coverage for patching up anything that needed patching up, so... Those are up, and I think they're very nice, very sharp. Wouldn't mind seeing us do something similar at some point. It is a nice, big space facing the community that we have over there on the west side of the building, but we don't usually do a lot with. We used to have a big banner that we put up on the side there, but it wasn't wasn't really that attention-grabbing. It was just red with white letters on it.
I don't remember that.
No, it was very forgettable. I say it was, but in all honesty, it's probably stuck here in the building somewhere.
That would be kind of a nice spot to get arbor brooming up the side of it or something. Of course, we don't want to do that until we know we're not bumping out to the west.
Yeah. Don't want to do anything too permanent, and also, I believe that Julian aspires to get some small temporary gardens over on that side of the building going for the gardening program.
Nice.
That we're gonna have next summer. So...
Already planning for next summer.
Well, that's, that's programming.
Yeah.
So... I know I've met Julian several times already discussing the possible books for the Rebetween the Things. That was a discussion that started almost as soon as it wrapped up, and with the programs, that's usually the way it goes. They never truly leave you. You're either presenting it or preparing for it. Right, Anna? Okay, so... I have my phone with me. Janie, I see you have your phone. Have you by any chance received any messages from?
From Kathy?
Kathy? My phone is getting really, really low on electricity, and then I plugged it in and later I realized that I had left the good cord at home. So now I am fighting with the bad cord.
Do not have anything here, let me...
Nothing like working with a bad charging cable and then realizing that it was not charging as much as it actually said it was. Your phone is not it.
We can still have the meeting, right?
Oh yeah, put Kathy on. Two, three? It sounded like she had called, and was looking for a link. Oh, that was Lindy?
Oh, no.
Yes.
Oh! Oh, oh, oh. For some reason, my brain translated that. It's Kathy.
She's been answering. We colorized it. That looks great, because I'm sure the original was not in color.
Oh, it was not. Oh, no, it was nice.
Did not answer. Let me just write. Let's see if I've got Jack.
Hope she's okay.
I need you.
You know, maybe she's just driving on the way over.
So is that photo, say, on 1st September?
Hi, Jack. It's Janie, and it's like 4:20. I'm at the Library for a meeting, and I wonder where Kathy is.
Yes.
She was talking to Eric earlier today, and I thought she was coming, and I just called her phone and to voice this, so I'm just curious. Thanks. I hope everything's okay. Bye.
She, she had asked about... She had asked me to put the... Here's the original mockups with George for scale.
Oh, yeah. See, I thought they were gonna do bigger ones of Catherine and John.
Yeah, it could look like giants standing over the village.
I do remember seeing those photos now that I look at them. At least the one.
Yeah, my understanding is for September and the big event, because the intent of, the intent of having them up there is that they're life-size, so that people can pose next to them.
Ah, right, gotcha, gotcha.
Or have pictures of them.
Is there another picture underneath?
Yeah.
It's just with the cow, it's still George, I guess.
That's the closes. We should have the timeline. Anyhow. Should we?
Yeah, so we might as well move on to item four here.
Sounds good.
Hiring of the contract manager, and...
So, we had a a request for a quote document, not a request for an RFP, which is the more formal. Generally, the vernacular is more formal, where you're going up for a formal bid process. Usually talked about an RFB or RFP, though sometimes your alphabet soup can get mixed around. The quote generally, in most cases, as in this one, you're talking about a less formal process. Sending out some information and asking, please let us know, you know, what this would look like for you to do this project. We had gotten a template from Joe Huberty at Engriff Anderson, which is a very nice template. I went through that and used that as a framework to create a document specific to Lake Bluff Library and this project. I then shared that document with both Joe and with Bonnie, and got some really good feedback from both, which I then incorporated into the draft that's present here. So, as far as the documents and what is in front of you for today, looking to get it to a place where we can comfortably consider it to be appropriate for what we needed to do, and that we can then be in the process of scheduling interviews with the construction managers that were recommended by Joe Huberty. And given the schedule ahead, I would anticipate those starting the second week in August. I'm gonna be honest to goodness out of town and incommunicable the first week, so...
It's okay.
New world.
You can go.
Well, you know, the... One of the wonderful effects of the last year, and there are so many to choose from, is, is that because I'm gonna be going up to Washington Island, the Wi-Fi up there is...
Like, nonexistent, probably.
So, I'm going to be disconnected, which will be nice, but the last year, I think, really only makes the feeling of being disconnected from the internet feel less good. I mean, just, just the way that everything works in the world now, it already feels a little uncomfortable when, when you've got that. But, you know, just after, after 2020, the feeling of like, you know, being disconnected from the internet, heading the internet down on top of everything that's happened, it feels like somebody pushed you off a cliff. Out in the void. You get surrounded by darkness and no one can see you. I don't know. It's gonna be good. I love Washington.
I, I do too. You know, we spent part of our honeymoon there, and we stayed in a place called The Holiday Inn, which was not a Holiday Inn.
It was the Holiday Inn.
Well, it was, it was a hootin'. Here she is.
Hi, Anna.
Hey, Kathy.
Hello. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I've got a spot set up for you over here. Everything going all right?
Yes.
Everything going all right?
Yeah.
A bit worried, what you were at for.
I supposed to be, oh dear, you're not kidding me.
What?
I don't, this is a tour?
Yeah.
I apologize. Darn it, I've been upstairs.
Oh!
Oh, you really?
Yes. I had, I really apologize, I... I had a 10:30 meeting this morning, pushing out, so I had a, I had a fish today. Well, I apologize, I made lots of progress.
I tried to call you, I tried to call Jack, I left a message with Jack, I changed it to make voices.
I hope you didn't get him there.
No. I left a message saying, "Look for Kathy."
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
"Hope everything's okay."
So...
I was browsing, got a book.
Yeah, well, good, good.
We had, as far as what we had missed, I'm just gonna adjust the camera here, because right now it's just getting real light.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What we should be... How am I supposed to do this?
You know, I'm sure I've missed nothing that is essential. I just wanted to make one comment.
We did add the, the update you recommended to the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, work with me here.
Put it on. You can put it back here.
Maybe if I just make a list. This is gonna be a really interesting recording, which Ellen was working with. The important thing is that you're being recorded, so that the voices are being recorded. That's an important bit of the meeting. Anyway, we approved the minutes, we included your recommended change regarding the payment for the project manager. I provided an update on the murals, and we had just gone through the intro, and we're getting, we're getting the start of the discussion for the project manager RFQ. So that is where we are at, and we caught us in a small segue onto the delights of Washington.
And that came up because of the timeframe for these meetings.
Yes.
That came up.
Because I mentioned that I was gonna be on vacation the first week of August.
Yes.
And that's welcome. So, to Washington.
Oh!
Yeah.
And Washington is what you do for this?
That's, that's where I'm going, and therefore why.
No Wi-Fi up there, you'll be in a panic. That's, I should have figured that one out, yeah.
Otherwise, I would be sitting out interviewing people on the picnic table outside the Washington Library, which would be...
Is there one? I'm sure there is.
There is. And I mentioned sitting out there and using the Wi-Fi, because I've done that before. It is...
It's kind of awful.
It's worth the wait.
I mean, it's bad, I mean, it's garbage, and that looks like civilization.
I mean, it's a lovely, lovely library, but anytime that you've got to be hunkered down outside public buildings in order to get under their Wi-Fi, I think it's worth reconsidering. So, anyway, we have the RFQ in front of us, but the question really is, are there any details that we want to discuss, anything else, document that we have questions about, that we want to work out or discuss before we send this out?
Well, just, just the... I guess, I guess we can still, if we decide to do this, can we go ahead and do it without having the meeting of the entire group and approving it, because it says July 2021, which is now, there's not much of it left to begin with.
Yeah, before we actually sent it out, we would want to adjust the dates
Okay.
there to reflect that, what we were sending out. We don't need a vote by the full board to approve this document.
Okay.
What we'll probably need is a approval from the full board in order to, to accept the contract.
Right, right, right.
From the project manager.
Okay.
That, that will likely need, because anything over $5,000, that's required for my law.
Did you know that, Bonnie? Anything over $5,000?
Yeah.
I have one question.
Why are you away?
When, and Jane, I came to review with Joe the last...
I was not.
Okay. We were talking about this process, and he recommended a project manager, getting someone for that role.
Right.
I thought, maybe I'm misreading this, I thought he recommended getting a project manager for the choir reading room project.
Yes.
With the idea that that probably would spring more into additional phases, so this is strictly the, because I noticed further in all, in all documentation about everything that's going through this possible expense. So I wondered, are we, is the scope of this contract the choir reading room?
Yes.
Okay.
It is mentioned in the history section about the potential for additional
Yeah.
Yeah.
Projects here at the library.
And that was Joe's suggestion, and that actually probably would be to our favor.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure that that's what I saw, this additional documentation.
No, and that was, I... Yeah, I tried as much as possible to incorporate that suggestion from Joe, that we focus on choir reading room, getting someone for that, but also do provide information of the larger projects with the goal of, you know, hopefully bringing somebody on board that we could continue to work with.
Thank you.
Which is helpful in a lot of ways, besides getting somebody that you know is reliable and that you're working with from one thing to another, and they would have a pretty good feel as far as how everything tied together, because they've been involved in all of various projects. It's also a time saver, because if we go back to the same person, then you know, that we don't need to keep going through this process.
So much to say, sure.
It's just, you know, getting back in here.
And Sean is, separate to Kathy, will be sent to Sean Kelly at Engriff Anderson. When does his role want to be in collecting this information?
He and Joe are going to provide us with their thoughts and feedback, and as far as what we receive from the project managers is evaluating the candidates as part of their overall for example, for use.
Hey, welcome to Island. Your questions?
Where did you say you saw that, that this person, this project manager would probably go into any...
It just, it solely mentions in the history section about the possibility for additional renovations here at the library, so I think it's intended to, how I see it, it's sort of like the best of both worlds, right? We're letting them know that there are more projects coming, we're only committing to this one, so if it works out, the partnership may
Gotcha.
continue, but if it doesn't, we're not tied to
Yeah.
continuing to work with this project manager.
Do well when there's more, you know, but, you know, we're not going to say, or should we? That, you know, we definitely bring that person back. If they do well, that's advantageous, but, you know, there's the first project, and the focus first and foremost needs to be on getting that done and done well. Okay, I will then start the process of getting in touch with the folks that Joe had mentioned. Is there... I don't know that it's necessarily required, but can't hurt with certain things.
Okay, well, I will move that with changes to, with appropriate changes to the calendar of events, we submit this to the people on the list. Possible project managers.
My second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Erica, in terms of the interviews themselves, Janie, going back to what we were talking about before.
Okay.
I am gonna be out of town for a few days in August, catching up from last year, so, but I'm available the 23rd to the 31st, no problem.
Okay.
That's Monday through whatever, you know, those eight, nine days.
Sounds good, and for the...
I am available on the 17th and earlier.
Yeah.
There's just that time, and if
Yeah.
I don't make some of them.
Well, and I'm thinking that for the for the interviews, we might as well be into making some use of Zoom for those meetings as well, and if there is a if there is a positive outcome from the, what I nearly spit up coffee this morning when I saw it written down in the blog, which is the fourth wave, a phrase that I hope to never hear.
Wait, did you hear this?
Yeah. It raises the possibility that the health emergency will be continued, which now seems likely at the end of the month if the current trend continues, which, while a bad outcome overall would have the positive outcome that the rules as far as the Open Meetings Act would continue to be assumed friendly, so that we could continue to use that more literally as we wish.
I would just ask what they have... I don't know how much respect that is gonna be government ties on telling people what to do this time around, but anyway, I'm not coming to the meetings. The process, for sure. I would request that any Zoom meetings, especially for something like this, if you could take care of business from the library, even in isolation, because we have more reliable service here, and you'd be conducting a meeting and contacting other different... So, we try to facilitate that.
Yeah. The... The, no, and that would be, that would be good. And it's in keeping as well with the hybrid setup that we're trying to put in place here with the Swirler Room, which is, you know, still making the Zoom available for those that are interested, but also having this sort of setup so that if somebody is not, can't say enough to participate, you know, or just doesn't want to participate, they can come and participate here.
Great. I think that's wonderful.
So, okay.
Let me go back just to clarify something in my own mind. What is Sean Kelly's role in this? Is he was our project manager?
There we go. Thanks.
And so he's not on our list of possible project managers for this one because he's an employee of Engriff Anderson, et cetera.
Because they're working with our architectural design.
Gotcha.
For the project, so that is their portion of the project.
Okay, makes sense. Yeah.
Sean was very good.
That'd be a great fit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it looks to me like maybe the only thing we need to change. Do we just need to bump everything back by one month?
Yeah.
I would be surprised if all the interviews in this section all take place in August, to be honest, because.
I would too.
Yeah, I mean, people that are employed in these firms are also probably have vacation booked and.
Right, right.
Kids back to school.
Yeah, exactly. September's probably a lot.
Yeah, I think if the timeline were to start in September, that's probably, on this calendar events, that's probably more realistic.
Yeah.
I'm at a test September 13th to 18th. That actually, that available by December three months. I don't think the interviews will take all them off once we get everything lined up.
Hopefully not.
I'm just worried about the availability of those firms to complete the requirements and have their presentations or team ready to meet with us.
We have them listed as, as asked ones, purposely to give ourselves a look over.
Right, right. But I think your point is well taken. August is just a problematic month to get something.
Yeah. So maybe this is.
You, pardon me, you actually direct this to particular, I know it's, because, is it going to general online RFQ place?
Yes, I'll put it up on the website as well, but then also, in particular, send it to the individuals that Joe had mentioned, and said, you know, we're requesting a quota unless you came, recommended from an architectural firm we're working with. To give us a quote.
There is some degree they're expecting it.
Yes.
It's good.
Is it stipulated how long this has to be posted and how long we allow? Like, if it posts, the only thing I can kind of relate it to is a job in the company. So a job would go up, it would be posted for two weeks, it would come down. If you didn't respond in those two weeks, you will, the decision makers moved on.
I'm just curious how that works. I mean, when you put up a request, whether it's an RFQ or an RFP, you just put it on the website and expect people to look at the website and find it? Or is there some kind of a generalized location for something like that? I mean, otherwise, it would seem to me the people who are doing that kind of work would spend a lot of time perusing.
Yeah. There are, there are firms that specialize in being aggregators.
Okay.
So basically, what they do is they provide for-price access to a website where they then have people that bring together all of the current quote candidates. So I'm often surprised a little bit as to how many people do see it when we just post up on the website. That said, you know, we do try to be as proactive as we can about quotes as well. So if we hear good things about a firm, or if there's a firm, whether it's work replacement or renovation here at the library, then we've worked with it before, and the work was good, you know, we reach out to people. And, you know, hey, we've got this thing, and we really appreciate a bid or a quote from RFK. So we, we do try to beat the bushes a bit to help the process.
Great, great.
And so when this is posted, will be, I think, another thing we need to add is deadline, like responsibly be submitted by.
Well, right. This one would get posted on the website as available until the position was filled.
Okay.
And per Joe's suggestion at the last committee meeting, was it a committee? Was it a, I think it was just a meeting with the, with an I and Cal to discuss the project. But when, so many meetings.
I know, Bonnie, you've already been.
No, I've not met Joe Huberty yet.
But it was not a committee meeting.
So the last time that Joe was in the last.
Yeah, because I remember that, because Cal's the elevator trustee, so it was not, we did not need.
So the last time that Joe stopped by and discussed with us, he recommended the project manager. And he also recommended that we look at the bid procedure for that, which was good advice. I followed up with our legal counsel, as he suggested on that, and our legal counsel said that, yes. In fact, project managers are for bid law for the state of Illinois, included as a professional under architectural bidding, which means that there's a lot more leeway as far as going out to bid, that you don't have the same requirements to, you know, definitely do 30 days and go through that fixed bid process that the state, for a lot of things, insists that you do. So we aren't required by, to do any particular, post a, for any particular amount of time for this, for a lot of things we are.
Okay.
So you'll get this up?
So I'll get this up.
Okay.
Okay, and Lyndy's able to pop in with us here. I'm hoping you can hear us, Lyndy.
Yes, I can hear you guys. Thank you.
I'm concerned that I might not be hearing Lyndy, but I think she might be talking.
No, I just was saying that I could hear you.
Can you hear me now, Lyndy?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, great.
I had the default settings on my computer decided that the microphone was also a speaker, which it is not. Okay, so Lyndy, we are up to the portion that you have been working on, which is the capital expense and contracts documents.
Yes, it's just, are we looking at the contracts? Are we looking at what's done and what needs to be done in a calendar sort of fashion? What I sent email, like three weeks.
Let me. Here, let me share over so that you can see what we're looking at as well, Lyndy. So this is what I've got up on the screen, which is the start of the contracts, not contracts, the capital expense plan document.
Okay.
So this is basically information on different pieces of the building. Some of it is fixtures and furniture such as carpeting on first and second floors, which is our top line. Others is mechanical, such as getting into the HVAC system, that of course being the big one, but not only one that we have in the building. So where possible, Lyndy's included the most recent cost from when we needed to replace, whether it's subject to regular replacement, regular maintenance. So is it something that we have somebody in who is looking at? That is helpful to know, because it gives us someone that we can converse with as far as the condition. And then to the best of our ability, Lyndy has provided an estimated lifespan for that following its installation. Now, Lyndy and I, one of the things we, I think we discussed the most on this was the estimated lifespan. Lyndy did a lot of human's work on this, trying to find the best estimates for lifespans for everything on the list. But the reality is that, that for a lot of it, you know, we're not experts, and it's a bit of a challenge, a bit more than work to really put an exact number to how much something is definitely going to last. So when it says estimate, you know, it definitely means estimate. It's our best estimate.
And where it says NK, what does that mean?
Not known.
And then, you know, there's a number of entries that appear to be all before 2011. I think 2011 might be the oldest one with the dollar figure in it. So where there's an entry but no cost.
Right, some of those things, I have to sort of re, re-go back and look in the, you know, this was done a couple of years ago, but I wasn't able to find out what we spent on certain things because they're all in a file in the storeroom or in the, you know, remote storage. So you have to pick through everything to find out what was, we paid for things. Is that what you're asking about what the payment was originally?
Yeah, just where it's blank, it sounds like you're saying it means that there's hard copy files somewhere that someone would have to go sort through.
Sure, sure. So like 1996, we definitely don't have those things. We have things back maybe 10 years.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah. Which, we have things that, that far back right now, because we're overdue for filing to weed our files with a, with a state. State requires that anytime that you get rid of the operational documentation, that you get their permission from the Record Retentions Office. We're, we're pretty overdue to get that filed and weed our files. So we've got a pretty good amount of history of things on file, but as Lyndy noted, it still only stretches back 10, maybe 15 years and that, not on everything. Anything past that, you know, the 90s and definitely 80s or 70s, that's.
Yeah.
You'd have to get really lucky and have some extra specific meeting minutes that we came across to get information on some of those things.
Do we have in this a, what the expense was for the project manager, who happens to be Sean Kelly? I think you said he was here for the roof project?
Yes.
And how that was built, if it was billed per hour or a flat rate for the job, regardless of how many hours?
It was a flat rate for the job, was it?
It was a flat rate for the job. And I recall even that because there were some complications as far as getting the bid finalized, that there was a small rider to put under that contract. I want to say it ended up being about $12,000.
The project manager, just the project manager or not the roof?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Roof was.
Roof is $250,000.
Yeah.
A lot of roof up there, and there was places that.
Yeah, the nature of the roof is that there's, it's tough to see that there's actually flat concrete places up there, where the two buildings come together.
Wow.
There's a certain amount of brickwork, because of the way that the columns get in, there's some other basering, and there's metalwork.
Steel beams.
So we had to get people in to do all of those different aspects of that. It was, it was great. And, you know, if you, if you stay with the board and they have a chance to get in on our other really fun project, which is the HVAC.
Yeah, I can see all the HVAC entries in here.
Which is also super complicated, because it is enclosed in the basement in the middle of the building.
Basically, the other side of this wall, there's like not a lot of space to get in.
2005, when they had to take the old one out, they had to cut it up into pieces to get it out through the door.
Yeah.
And then they had to specifically model the new one to be able to go in and similar finite chunks.
So, Lyndy, thank you for putting this together. I know it's a big chore. I'm, I mean, if you look at it by color, a lot of it is just wear and tear that we kind of wait around and see the yellow and we've got possible renovations coming up. And the show that you have is been talked about forever. But when we get into the red section, the electrical, mechanical, I can't help but notice the, well, the lifespan of the furnace seems to be behind us. I thought we had like a 30-year, and I guess it's a 20-year window. The sub pumps. Now, Eric, you can help me out on this. We've got 2018 replaced the battery. That gives us a 2023, and then.
Those are just guesses, you know. We have them checked every year.
Okay.
It could last us longer. So some of these are not necessarily lifespans, but, you know, to do a more detailed inspection. But as I say, they could last 10 years, but they get used to it.
A lot of it's, a lot of it's catch, catch again. My concern is, well, budget-wise, we have to start. We see something that's like a sub pump that we know could happen this year in the next three or four years, we have to start budgeting accordingly, so that if, in the event that it pops up, we're right. The other thing is, and Eric, you might have to pursue this, we just got our renewal from state farm insurance. Now, that's residential homeowners, but there's a new stipulation that we have what's called backup of sewer and sub pump coverage. So if it backs up and the rug and the drywall are ruined, now there's a stipulation, provided the homeowner has taken due diligence in maintaining the system. So if they came in and said, you got a 20-year-old sub pump, they could deny the claim. So we have to be sure we know what our insurance requirements are to protect the property that we're insuring. So that's a follow-up that apparently is new in the industry, and we better be on top of it.
I can touch base with the. See what, if any specifics they had about it.
Yeah, because they're preferring people who are proactive and it's the step before they have the claims.
Yeah. You know, and as Lyndy noted, the, you know, the estimates on the dates, as far as putting those numbers in there, Lyndy gave it off to be conservative, which I applaud her for. So as she said, you know, a good way to think of those is the point at which we should really start paying, so we're going to pay attention to it.
And Lyndy, is it also the case that these are more finance-driven amortization lifespans than true functional lifespans?
Well, I don't know what the amortization would be on a smoke detector or like the heaters, you know, because I'm used to accelerated amortization or, you know, things like that. I used to go on a depreciation model, so I'm not quite sure if I know what the words you're using, but I'm just throwing things out there to have a number. There's a book that's called The Means Book, and it's like $300, which is why we haven't bought it. But it will give you a lifespan of components, and it's what engineers use. There's a local guy who works in, from one of these companies that lives in Lake Bluff, and I was going to ask him if I could have him take. And I was going to ask him if I could have him take one and have me look at it and see if in fact it would help us with something like this.
Is there anyone that provides that service of just inspecting the building to give us? You've done all the legwork on all the systems, but someone just who kind of does, does a building inspection for a reasonable amount of money that when that's done every five years, we know we're on top of things and we've got a good.
Right.
Heads up that you've been used down the road, we're, we're replacing whatever. And then three years later, we're replacing something else. So we don't get hit off once.
Well, the fellow, I think it was Wiss, Jenner and something, we had, I had looked at them. Yeah, I think that was the people who worked on the sculpture in Chicago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They're structural engineers.
Yeah, so one of the people lives in Lake Bluff and I had contacted him before. So I might be able to reach out to him. We don't want that kind of expertise, but he might be able to recommend somebody to us that we could show them this and they could say, well, no, that's way off or no, that helps or, you know, maybe start that way. Because to get an engineer in here that will know all these different components might be expensive. I don't know. But I think you're right, Kathy. We don't want to have to be keep throwing softballs at this all day long.
Right.
The, uh, back in the before times, uh, when we were a couple of years ago, call this now, um, at the end of 2019, when Lindy was working through the most recent permutation polish of this and we were going to get it in front of the building grounds committee. As, as part of that, I had talked to Hank Berg Anderson just to see what a contract like that might look like and whether that would be something that they would do. They said that it would be a service that they could do for us. And the rough quote that I got was for, let's say $4,500 to provide a inspection estimate.
Well, if that was done four to seven to eight year intervals, I think it's money well spent and wouldn't do it much. I think if it tells us what we need to know in terms of budgeting.
Yeah.
Avoiding a problem. This is something to think about.
Agreed. You know, and I, I think in terms of information here, I think Lindy did a great job. There's, there's a ton of information here. Certainly there's a lot of information that in terms of the cost and the recent, recent, how recently things were replaced that we wouldn't be getting from an engineer. But in terms of the estimate, as far as how, how much life we have on various things, you know, I, I, I don't think that we can compete with an engineer coming in with that. Lindy mentioned the book. They've, the average engineering office has a lot of professional resources to go on by training that they can reference as far as how long stuff lasts. And it's kind of a challenge, I, I think with a lot of the stuff that we have in the building just because it's custom, um, public space. So it, it tends to be hard without professional inspection sometimes to gauge exactly what's going on with some of them.
Yeah, and really when you look, the, the majority of the stuff we're really worried about is mechanics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're going to see if the guys are going to fall down, I think, and those are others.
But the, yeah, the, the mechanicals, the, you know, if it's got moving parts and you can't get, you know, can't look inside it, that's, yeah.
Has, uh, what's the name of our HVAC?
Murphy and Miller.
Murphy and Miller. Do they, have they voiced, I know they are doing some kind of long-term maintenance.
Yes, yeah.
Have they spoken up on our, on the several condition and health of the systems?
I haven't heard anything, Lindy. Have you talked to them about the state of the system recently?
I have not. There's some things that are, that are not working up to par and we're going to be taking care of that. Like we have a, a gate valve sort of like that will let in fresh air and out. Um, so that gate is not working. We're going to fix that so we can have cool air versus running the AC. Um, just looking at this, I know that the museum side for HVAC is a little bit on the older side. So I could ask them about that lifespan, but sometimes it might be self-serving. They haven't brought anything to my attention, but I could ask them to tell me not what's broken, but what do they foresee in the next couple of years that might need to be fixed.
Is there, are we looking at their contract in the near future? I can't remember. Is that something that's coming out?
Which contract with Murphy and Miller?
Yeah. The, the current contracts with Murphy and Miller, we have left on a year-to-year basis because we wanted to keep tabs on that and make certain as we carried that forward that it was really the best deal. Because we'd opted for a bit of extra coverage because we were having a lot of issues with things that, they were major catastrophic things, but there was enough of them in the average year leading up to 2019 that they were expensive to start.
We're paying.
I think we're getting our money out of it, my, my sense is right now. But, um, you know, I, I, I think here at the end of the current fiscal year, we'll want to take a look at that. And confirm that.
That's what I was just thinking when you mentioned having somebody like W.J. or something like that come in and do a thorough building inspection. We already have oversight into at least that system.
Yeah.
And I, I.
That's the real killer.
That, that's, that's the most important one, really.
Though, Lindy, my, my sense when we've talked to Murphy and Miller as, as well as other HVAC folks when we were contracting elsewhere was that generally they don't want to provide any sort of opinion or analysis unless you're going to contract with them for it.
I think so. And, you know, sometimes it can be self-serving. You know, if they come in with less problems than the next guy, then maybe we'll go with whomever because, you know, they're, they're involved in the business. If we get somebody who's not involved in HVAC, giving us an estimate of the lifespan of an HVAC, but knows that kind of system might be more objective.
Right, it's akin to when you buy a house, right? You get an independent inspector to come and check out the house. You know, your original proposal, that's what rang true to me. It was like, oh yeah, it's as if you were buying a property to somebody independent.
Says this is, you know, it has no interest in other than.
Right.
To be the job, so.
I think that would be.
Something to think about.
So Eric?
Yep.
Um, so if you tab over, there's some, this is just by system? So if you go to the bottom, you know, under sheets in the Excel spreadsheet, is this an Excel? Or is this a Word doc?
Uh, this is, this is a PDF.
Oh, okay, then you can't, never mind.
I can bring the other one up though. Let's see here.
Because the, the other one will show you by year what, you know, is not, that's coming up. Like initially I had 20 to 25 years for carpet, but I read somewhere that that's really, it should be like 10 years, but we can't be changing carpet every 10 years. Um, so anyway, the Means Book, I was looking at another study done by, I think it was Will Met. And that's where I learned about the Means Book and how carpet's supposed to last 10 years. Well, I think it's depends on what it's over, right? If it's over concrete, it might last less than if it's over wood.
Right.
Like that.
Yeah. Okay, so I've got it up here. So, oh yeah, asset log by year. So this is the information broken out as far as, you know, based off of projected when would probably be a good idea to take a look at them all. Start paying attention, start planning for that replacement. So we've got a few things, obviously, in the, the old side of the building that really probably would have been advantageous for us to have looked at before now. Obviously the restrooms and some of the fixtures on the old side of the building could have used a bit more TLC before now. And then I, as you can see here, we've got a few that are broken out as things to take a look at here and keep an eye on this year. Was it 2011? I thought it was 2012 that we did the smoke detectors and fire panel.
You know, I have to check. You sent me information and I haven't changed it, I think. So I think it was even more recent than that. Yeah.
Yeah. Because that, that I know was, uh.
But like the hot water heaters, um, you know, the one in the wood building is original. The one downstairs in where, where you're located, I think is probably 20 years old. I don't remember when it was replaced. So those are the kind of things that, you know, just you don't think about necessarily when you think about a library is having, you know, two of those and.
The wood building was built when?
2002, I think.
2002, 2002, 2003. It took them two or three years to get everything wrapped up there.
So we've got two 18 to 20 year old.
Yeah. So, um, I would guess that the hot water heater on the wood building side is probably a residential model.
You know what? It's in the ceiling on the second floor, so I think it's pretty small. I've never seen it, but that's where I was told it's, it is because they were going to have a sink and, uh, in the mezzanine on the wood building and they never did.
I was going to say, well, why, if you have a hot water heater in the wood building? You know, I think it was the kitchen area.
Right, and so that's why they put it in a second floor bathroom ceiling? Because that would be adjacent to where they were going to have their sink?
The.
In the original plan.
The challenge with some of the fixtures in the machinery in the wood building is one of the ways that costs were controlled on the project, I know, is that some of those things, they, they just went for basic residential models, some of the things. Pardon me if I'm wrong, but I think the air conditioning units are just pretty standard residential back for the, uh, for the wood building. Is that right?
I don't, I don't know. I know there's a split system, um, but the condensers outside might be. Um, I can get some information from Murphy and Miller. Um, is what they think the lifespan of those might be. Because those are a little more easier to judge, I think, than the big air handler that is next to the spruce room.
Yeah, the.
Eric, if they're restrooms, how good they test, oh, they have to be.
They, looking at them to be on the outside as someone who admittedly doesn't really know anything about air conditioning. They, they look pretty. I mean, you, you look at the one that's in between the, the two buildings that's for the, for the library. It's a pretty standard industrial. There's no question you'd ever find that behind somebody's house. You know, unless you were like, you know, had a really big house, like a crazy house. But then over on the corner there at the edge of the parking lot, there's a couple small units that to me look like they probably are or are similar to residential units where they're just kind of like the, you know, typical, you know, units that you would see out there. There, there are more than one. It's, it's not a, a single system. It is a split system. So it's not relying on one running, trying to fill the entire space all the time. But, you know, it's, it's definitely a big contrast between the machinery there for the two sides of the building.
Is a hot water heater required in the building? If it isn't necessary?
No, that's a good question.
Well, there's no heat, there would be no hot water in the wood building without it.
Well, sure, but where do the heaters happen?
Where's their hot water?
The bathrooms.
There are bathrooms, okay.
You know, by the elevator. That's the wood building.
Oh, that, okay, that, the elevator, so the restroom across from Eric's office we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
So that requires that hot water heater?
Yeah, I mean, we could freeze them out. That would have been a problem.
I'm not asking you that, I'm just kidding. Someone thought they were going to move in there once and they never did. We're learning all sorts of interesting things.
Lindy, this is a funky building as well, we're.
I am.
Oh, yeah.
What else is new?
Yeah. Well, it's, uh.
Lindy, one last question. Is that the only purpose for that hot water heater?
I think so. I, yeah, it has nothing to do with the furnace, to my knowledge. I don't see why there would be, because there's a main water supply that's in the wood building children's lower level. That's water, but I think it's just for the bathrooms.
Oh, yeah. I don't think that there's anything, it wouldn't, there isn't anything in there in terms of the HVAC system that would need hot water.
No.
No, and I don't, I'm not worried. Got a drinking valve. No, got rid of the drinking valve, didn't you, museum? Yeah. And that wouldn't be hot water anymore? Oh, no, that might be, that might be something that, I don't know, we might explore options on that.
Yeah, when it comes to replacing it versus not, that's, how often is that, that confused?
Well, it's providing hot water to the, um, to the bathrooms that are by the elevator.
The downstairs also?
I would assume that those three restrooms are on the same.
Okay, well, that's the fourth floor.
Pardon me if I'm wrong on that, Lindy.
No, I think you're right.
But that, that I think is, is the case and.
So all three of those bathrooms were put in at the same time that the.
Yeah.
For that there was only.
The, there were the two that are across from the desk and then there's the, the one at the bottom of the stairs.
Hey Lindy, this, this other summary, I think, did Lindy put this one together as well? The contracts enforced during fiscal year 2020, 2021? Thank you again. This is, this is super helpful. I just want to make sure the, the far right column, cost PM, is that per month?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's no triple, triple zeros. Again, this is my, my work lens coming through. Like anything I would ever look at at work would have three zeros on it, but this is flat rate.
Like, see for the computer, number two, line two would be $1,087.
Yes, okay, so it's not thousands, these are not, don't represent thousands, these are absolute.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I should, is there a, um, motion that's required from the committee to, to actually say, hey, we recommend that a independent inspector be brought in to evaluate, you know, it would evaluate roughly half of all these major contracts and the systems to.
To evaluate the contracts as well?
Actually, I meant, I meant not, not, I'm sorry, to evaluate the contracts. Good, good clarifying question. Really to evaluate the systems themselves and give us an independent report on the building condition to help inform, kind of, i- i- in some ways this helps, helps inform the long-range plan. I think that's a part of our goals, right, for the year is working with finance team, I think, on the long-range plan or the long-range plan committee itself.
Well, what Lindy and I can do, it sounds like we've got some leads that we can follow up on as far as folks that we can bring in to perform that service. We can pull that information in together and come back to the building grounds committee with a recommendation on that.
Yeah, and break this down. You've done a great job on it, but a lot of this is self-explanatory. Still requires us to be on top of stuff like that. A 20-year-old second floor hot water heater would, in a library.
We don't want to have to replace both the hot water heater and the ceiling and all of us. The furniture.
So that, that might be something that realistically gets some attention and gets into a budget for next fiscal year. And it's just, it's just prevented maintenance. I don't think we need an engineer for that, but just take a, get really down into the weeds on this thing. I mean, obviously the HVAC is the big thing. Also, I think just, and we, you know, why aren't you people that run through this? But check off things that potentially will be man or managed hopefully by a renovation that things would automatically be taken. Like light fixtures where everything's going to go LED, all that kind of stuff. This is going to happen. So get down to what really concerns us in terms of the exposure and decide how we best want to be informed about it. So it could be a limited, I mean, we know the roof is okay now. We know that the bathrooms need to be replaced. We're going to do the next one, tell us that. There really is this HVAC, sun pump, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the, the things that will keep us.
Yeah, the things that will keep us comfortable and keep us from having issues like
Yeah, like windows, if we do, if we get busy with projects within the building, windows will come with it.
Like the elevator, doesn't that have to be by law? Doesn't every elevator in a public building have to be inspected once a year by?
Yep.
Yeah. So some of these things already get covered.
Right. Yeah, and that's one of our contracts, isn't it, the elevator maintenance?
Yeah, the elevator maintenance, and it gets inspected, though. The inspection is focused on is that it's safe to ride in right now. You know, whether taking a look as to how safe to ride in, it's going to be in five years, it's not a thing that we're paying that much. So there might be something there, but you are right that we are getting some information and feedback on that at least.
Irrigation, I would assume that means for a sprinkler system that would be activated by a fire alarm, right?
Depending on where it is, I don't know, that might actually be the irrigation system that waters the water.
Yeah, I think five is the water sprinklers in the building for fires. I think that's item number five. Yeah, I was looking at 10.
Just out of curiosity, irrigation, why don't, did we compare Chicago Sprinkler to Breezy Hill when it's all?
We've gone with what was in the original dolman garden, so we, I'd be happy to bid that out.
Well, because we did some, we expanded the sprinkler system quite a bit when we did the last gate, and flagstone work. And Breezy Hill does have an irrigation department that we might, I mean, we might just want to compare prices.
That'd be great.
That isn't one I don't think we've been in a while, so that'd be very good. So you'll follow up on that, Lyndi?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
So really, I think the one that, well, obviously, there's the tech stuff, which I know your committee is working on.
Yeah.
And, and then just that each that.
And the shelving for second floor, I think is something we should look at, too. Just because, you know, even though we put the ties in there, they're original to the building.
The operating shelving stacks on the second floor. And the, like the ones on the main floor, we put some ties in there, which stabilized them very nicely for the present. But, you know, I think Lyndi's right that they're worth keeping and keeping an eye on. I know we should probably come up with a plan there. You know, the other shelving in the library, we already replaced the stacks downstairs. And we know that we're going to be replacing the ones on the main level when we do the renovation. But we do need to think as well, as far as what we're going to do with the ones on the second floor, because those will need to be swapped out at some point in the project as well.
So can we can we actually, since we've got all those days already put together, can we actually price the shelving, just so we will know, so we can break that down?
Yeah, we should be able to get a quote. That should be
Right now, you've got $30,000 for youth, and that's, that was spent. Yeah, that was spent. So what we're looking at is first floor and upper level. We should know the real dollars for that.
Upper level in particular, because like the project that we did replacing the children's department, we targeted that because we knew that the layout wasn't going to be changed by the renovation. It's the same story with second floor. So, yeah, that would be a good big project.
Well, let's get that, those numbers before our next budget.
Sounds good.
So we can begin to think about when that happens.
Sounds good. That could be one of the, the friends contributed to the one in the children's department. That might be another one that they would like to contribute to. We've got options once we get a quote. Any other questions? And also, we don't have to go through everything, everything right now. We can come back to the, to the document and any, any additional questions and email discussions in future meetings. Really, I think the goal with, with the documents is, you know, wanting them to be something that we keep up to date so that we've, you know, always got a pretty current record as far as where things stand. And I know Lyndi is, well, 2020 overall was not a great year for keeping documents like this current, but I know Lyndi's did her best, and I know has done a lot this spring working on putting current information in.
Yeah.
Keep this
It's a huge job to compile this.
It is, it's huge.
But before we throw away those documents or, you know, whatever, I'll go through them and fill in from the years that will be, you know, deaccessioning our bills, so that this will be more fleshed out.
Also, if I could just speak up, the Mr. Reyes, is it Reyes or Reyes, our landscape?
Oh, it's sorrow, yes.
I think he's doing an outstanding job. Every time I go by the library, I'm so proud of that, all that work that we've done here. It looks great.
It does.
I think it's better and better each year, and it's secured for beautifully. He takes a real pride in his work, so I'll, he's just doing a great job.
He's now doing the bank across the street and the condominium to the corner.
Oh, is he doing the old PNC building?
Yeah, so we got to make sure he fertilizes us more.
I'm just glad that they've got somebody working on that over there. It's even better to hear that that's a sorrow. That was getting a bit rough.
And that's a recent job for him, I guess, because I just noticed the last couple of weeks it's improved over there.
Yeah.
Eating mess. Well, good, let's get this business, that's good.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or discussion today? Otherwise, as I mentioned, this is something that we're going to keep up to date and can and will continue to make use of as a document, so we'll come back to it.
Think of All good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyndi.
Thanks, Lyndi. I'll meet you in person soon, Bonnie, when I don't have my parents' clothes on.
Sounds good.
Okay. I think then that takes us through the scheduled business.
Yes.
Do we have any, anything else that anyone would like to submit for discussion? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
My second.